Right, we're live now Chair.
Yeah, good evening everyone and welcome to this remote meeting of Inner North West Community Committee. My name is councillor Javid Akter and I will be chairing today's meeting. The Inner North West Community Committee covers Headingland Hyde Park, Little London Woodhouse and Wheatwood Wards. And is a committee where board councillors have an opportunity to discuss and make decisions about services and priorities for our local area. And also consider funding applications regarding local community projects, youth and the youth activities. I would like to start the meeting today by confirming that today's community committee meeting, the, sorry, today's community committee meets at the requirements of council's constitution, even though members are in remote attendees. And that members of the public are able to view the meeting while the live webcasting. As we begin the meeting, could I ask all members to mute their microphones unless I invite them to speak? This will avoid distractions from background noise and should member wish to speak or ask questions, please use raise hand and facilities to attract my attention. Could I now invite members and the officers for introduction, introduce themselves? Mute your mic once you have introduced yourself and I'll start with councillor Kayleigh Brooks.
Hello everyone councillor Kayleigh Brooks, Little London Woodhouse Ward.
Thank you councillor Abigail Marshall-Katung.
Good evening everyone, it's Abigail Marshall-Katung representing Little London Woodhouse and the city centre.
And I have learnt to understand councillor Garth Wett and councillor Walsh are in a planning meeting at the moment and they will join us once the meeting is finished. Can I ask councillor Jonathan Prior to introduce himself please?
Evening everyone, I'm councillor Jonathan Prior for Headingly and Hyde Park.
And councillor Jonathan Bentley.
We have apologies from councillor Bentley Chair.
I do apologise for that. Councillor Christine Knight.
Hello, that's councillor Christine Knight for Wheatwood Ward.
And can I now ask the officers, we've got Mercia Cunningham from the community committee team.
Excuse me Chair, would you not like me to go in turn?
Oh, I do apologise. Oh, sorry Chris, Chris Howley, how could I forget you mate?
So I'm Chris Howley, councillor for Wheatwood. Thank you Chair.
Honestly, it was a little deliberate.
Okay.
Mercia?
Hello, I'm Mercia Cunningham, I'm the localities officer for the inner north west area.
And Andy Booth, last but not the least.
Good evening, Andy Booth from Governance Services and I'll be the part to the Inner North West Community Committee this evening.
Can I now move the agenda item one?
Okay, thank you, thank you Chair. So, under agenda item number one, there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Under agenda item number two, there are no items which require the exclusion of the pressing public. Under item number three, I'm not aware of any late items of business. Under agenda item number four, could I ask members if they've got any disclosable pecuniary interest to declare? I'll take that silence as none. Agenda item number five, apologies for absence, we've got apologies from councillor Bentley and also from councillors Garth Wett and Walsh who are in another meeting and hoping to make it later. Moving on to agenda item number six, which is the open forum. The open forum, we're handling slightly different while we're meeting remotely. Members of the public have been invited to put written submissions into the committee, which we have some tonight. Would you like me to do them one by one Chair?
Yes please.
Right, the first one I've got is from a Hyde Park resident and it's regarding the planters. And they're asking, when are the planters in Hyde Park going to be removed? Residents' journeys are taking longer, which is creating more pollution. They go on to say that they've observed vans and trucks both getting stuck and now that lockdown is easing, the main routes will be busier. And they also ask, where is the evidence to show if this is working in terms of pollution and congestion before and during the installation?
Right, can I invite the Headingland Hyde Park councils if they want to say anything on this particular item?
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I'd say is we're in the middle of that gathering of evidence. They were a trial, they are a trial. We know that kind of when they were put in, obviously there was some pushback and we removed the ones on Royal Park Road, Alexandra Road. And two others, which I can't remember the exact words. So four have been removed already. The rest, we're kind of leaving there till the end of the trial period, at which point the whole thing will be evaluated. I think kind of, you know, look, I live 100 yards from one of them. I think anecdotally, they were quite disruptive at the start. But since kind of sat navs have been updated, since people have got used to it, kind of the amount of traffic around them has, has reduced. But I would emphasise, they are, they are still a trial. And the ones that we haven't yet removed will be there till the end of the trial. I'll leave it there Chair, thank you.
Now, my, my understanding is that the, the two, the, the main one were quite sort of, even, even though the our ward, we're getting some complaints, one to do with the Alexandra Road and the Queen's Road junction one. And both of those have been removed, which has eased a lot of traffic issues in the area, which, which, which I think a lot of members of our communities in London and Hyde Park have really appreciated the, the Headingland Hyde Park councils did listen to us and, and we did whatever we could have done. But you're absolutely right, if they're trials for next few months and see what the consultation outcome will be and we'll, we'll take it from there.
And Chair, if I may, I think it's worth noting that we get a lot of communication about these planters. Some people absolutely loathe them and want us to take them all out. A lot of communication we get is people absolutely loving them and actually have complaints that we've taken some about. So I think kind of removing the, some of the ones where we're getting most complaints, but leaving some of the others. At the moment seems to be a good compromise, but as I say, we'll evaluate the whole thing at the end.
But, but it's important that the members of the communities who are watching us, that is, is, is said to be said that we are listening and, and we will, we will obviously wait for the outcome and see how, how things progress. But yeah, definitely. Anybody else wants to come in on this particular item? No? So shall we move on to the next one then Andy, please?
Okay Chair, the next one focuses on student antisocial behaviour. And we've had submissions from residents in Moorlands. And they're asking, what are the councillors going to do about antisocial behaviour in our area? Especially that caused by students. I've been a resident for 20 years and I'm faced with noise nuisance, drug taking in the street and parties. We were pleased when the recent PSPO was launched, but since then, the bins and litter still block the streets and we are all sleep deprived due to parties night after night. Whose responsibility is it to address these problems? The police, landlords, council or universities? When will some meaningful action be taken? Home is now needed more than ever as a safety net.
I, I think it's important, I think it's everyone's responsibility, including ourselves. So we, we need to be I mean, with, I mean, we did have one meeting with the, with the local residents and Moorland residents were there. However, I absolutely understand, I mean, when people are trying to live in a, in a, in a, in a in an environment where they've got to get up early in the morning either for the school or for the work or whatever. Last thing you want is the loud banging noise music or, you know, so I think councillor Brooks, you probably will have more sort of input or councillor Katung?
Um, it's, yeah, it's my understanding that the police are doing regular patrols. And from, from what the police have said, there's a particular address, the problem tenant has moved out, so there should be an improvement in the situation there. But obviously if there's, if there's any further issues, please do get in touch with us and in touch with the police contacts.
And also I personally feel that, you know, like I always have said and I always believe that the residence groups are god gifts, gifts to us as a, as a local politicians and we need to be working with our local communities. But I, I, Andy, I mean, what I would suggest that we need to arrange another meeting with this, this particular group outside this meeting and see if we can find ways and get the university and, and the antisocial behaviour and the police team together and let's, 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 let's monitor the situation and if there's as, as a key point, I think we need to, we need to make sure that our residents, if there's anything that we can do, they live in a peace and harmony in their own, in their own environment. So I take this, this as a serious, but let's, let's arrange another meeting with this particular group and, and see what the real issue, I mean, I do, I do get the Twitter feed and on the social media, but I think because we were under the lockdown and we couldn't have gone out to meet some of the local residents, so something I, I feel that even though we can't meet them physically, but we can have some sort of remote meetings and then to, to build some sort of relationship with the local residents and see how we really address this particular troubling issue. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't particular tarnish any particular group. Let's say young people and, and if they have some issues that we need to address, we need to get the universities on board as well. So I'm just trying to be as diplomatical as possible, if you, if you, if you understand. Does councillor Katung, do you want to say anything on this?
Unfortunately, unfortunately she's not able to re-enter at the moment. Her internet has been playing up, so she's.
So I'm not the only one.
Yeah, she's been kicked out of the meeting unfortunately, so.
Right, okay. Right, if that's, that's, so what, what I want out of this, this particular public's concern on the forum is that we need to have another meeting with this particular group and see if we can get our partners on board. And take it, take this as a, as a, as a serious call. Next one please Andy.
Right, that's it for the open forum Chair. So you're on to agenda item seven now, which was minutes of the previous meeting.
Yeah, take it, it's all been read. Are there any materialising from minutes? I take a silence as everyone's okay with it, yeah? Thank you. Can we now move on to the item eight, draft connecting Leeds transport? Which, which is led by Paul Foster and Flynn Campbell to present a, a report please. Are they on the call?
Yes, thank you Chair. So my colleague Finn's just going to put up a presentation, we're hopefully going to just quickly run you through, if you like, the, the transport strategy that was went to executive board in December as a draft, to go out to consultation with everyone in the city to ensure that we've got a transport strategy that isn't just one that's written by officers, that one that is supported by the people of Leeds. And so I think my message to members and people watching is do engage in this consultation, tell us what you think. And, and your views are really important in shaping this to make sure we have the, the best strategy we can going forward. So we've put forward a vision of a city where you don't need a car. And that's about making sure that everyone has an affordable, low carbon, healthy alternative for every journey they need to make. And I really stress the everyone and every journey because it's about making and, and changing the transport system. So there are a range of solutions for people. For different people, it'll be different things that they need to, to, to make that transition. And we need to improve that and make sure that it's equitable and everyone has access to it. Okay Finn, this is very much based on three key objectives around tackling climate change, delivering inclusive growth and improving health and wellbeing. And they're the, the core principles of what the council's working on. And, and this transport strategy is showing how our travel can, can adapt to that. So on climate change, transport emissions in the city are about a third of all the carbon that's emitted by the city. So clearly a huge amount to do to reduce that if we're going to reach our 2030 climate emergency target of being net zero by 2030. So that, a lot to do on that. In terms of inclusive growth, that's about making sure that everyone in the city has the opportunities to access the employment, the leisure, the education, the healthcare facilities that there are in the city and they can get to them easily and conveniently. It's also about making the transport system more efficient, reducing the delays and times it takes people to travel and reducing the cost for everyone. By having a more efficient system, we can run it more financially easier and therefore everyone should benefit from that in terms of saving themselves money on their transport costs. And improving health and wellbeing, clearly with walking and cycling, that is beneficial for both our physical and mental health. So we want to encourage more of that. And also we need to look at how we reduce the negative effects that transport has on our health in terms of air pollution and on-road safety. And so they're, they're key elements of what this transport strategy is trying to achieve. We've set ourselves some very ambitious targets in terms of that and I just want to highlight a couple of those. I've mentioned the climate emergency, but obviously vision zero is something that we, we want to adopt through this, this strategy, which is about making sure that there are zero people killed or seriously injured on Leeds roads by 2040. Now, at the moment, that figure of serious injuries and fatalities, 2019, it was about 350 in the city and we need to work to how we can reduce that over, over time. Working in partnership with the police, ensuring there's the adequate enforcement, working on education and then also changing the road environment so that it's safe and the infrastructure works as well in that safe, safety way. We're also going to be talking about targets in terms of mode shift and, and making a significant increase in public transport, both rail and more importantly bus, and increasing that walking and cycling element, which in turn will allow us to decrease the amount of cars on the road, reducing congestion, making those other modes work better and reducing some of those health and carbon issues that we, we've talked about previously. Okay, next slide Finn. I think what this, this work has done when we've been developing this strategy is really showing us the scale of the challenge that reaching a 2030 zero carbon, a net zero is, is in terms of the scale of intervention that we need to make to get there. If we carried on doing as we are and vehicle fleet changed a little bit as it has been with current trends, we'd probably get about 17% reduction of that carbon figure. Delivering the, the, the things that are in our strategy, we set out there, which requires significant funding. It requires probably more powers from central government and it requires that level of support. Probably gets us to a 43 to 50%. We've done some sensitivity tests around what post-COVID people's work habits might do and their commuting habits and that might change some of those figures. But that still leaves us about at 50% of that target that we're not going to reach. And so we've set out in the strategy a number of additional measures that we want people's views on around whether these are the appropriate measures that we should add to the transport strategy to reach that goal. And they're things like workplace parking levy or a low carbon zone which, which charge vehicles for, for, for using, using the roads if they, that, you know, the more, the higher carbon emitting vehicles would be charged. Looking at how we can fund public transport differently, how can we put more public money into, into public transport to make it run at the times people want and to the places people want, at the frequencies people want and, and at the cost that people want to, want to have. Therefore encouraging more people to use it. And then how can we look at shared ownership models? Do we all need to own a car or can there be things like car clubs etcetera? So there's, there's additional measures in there that we want people's views on. Okay, I'll move on to the next bit. So I think we sent with the papers a an executive summary which sets out in more detail what we've called our six big moves and they're the focus areas that we're looking at. And this is what I talked about at the start, about a wide range of interventions from decarbonising transport, from creating healthier streets, spaces and communities, transforming the city centre, looking at public transport, delivering mass transit and these new mobility solutions that, that I talked about. So there's a lot of detail in there about each of those. I think for, for this area, I think the, the key, key ones that I want to focus on are that the healthier streets, spaces and communities and the enhancing public transport. I think they're, they're really important in, in sort of inner areas to ensure that we get those right. So it's about increasing our investment and I think obviously at the start of the meeting, there were some comments about the, the planters and that scheme in itself. But what I think that was a, an emergency response and a trial of the types of measures that we need to do to enhance our streets, make them places people want to be in, want to enjoy, want to travel down, especially focusing on district centres and how we can make them better, how we can make that work for the neighbourhoods that surround them and how you connect them in and, and, and really tackle some of those barriers that major highway networks in the city create and the, the impact they have on local communities of traffic going through them. On public transport, it's very much about getting ourselves into a position where we can get a virtuous circle with that. As I said, is it about putting more funding in? Is it about giving public transport buses particularly more space on the road so that they're not affected by congestion, speeding up those times, making it easier for the bus companies to stick to their schedules, to run at a more efficient and lower cost way. And then through partnership and working with the combined authority, can we get some of that savings back into the system to allow us to reduce the cost of travel for everyone, reduce the fares on, on public transport? And if we do those things, then more people will be attracted to it and hopefully it becomes a virtuous circle that just gets better and better. And that's what we need to do because at the moment it has been declining and not working. So I think that, that, that's sort of the strategy bit and I'm willing to take questions on some of the other elements as well. Next slide Finn. So when we came here, when we did the transport conversation in 2016, we've just looked back at some of that, that information when we've been developing the strategy. And these are the key things that it came out from the Inner North West feedback about more walk to work, making sure the streets are that, that, you know, that element that I talked about around making our streets feel like places you want to be, you want to walk down etcetera. It's part of this strategy and we, we want to deliver on that. Again, quality of buses and I think I've outlined that, you know, everywhere we go, the, the improvements to the buses are a key feature that everyone feeds back and we know that we need to make them better and we've got to find ways to do that. And the strategy sets out how we do, how we're going to do that. And that, that point around segregating buses from cars again, where can we, where can we give them? Give them priority. A bus carrying 60 people should surely get priority over individual cars which have one or two people in them. So how can people get involved? Go to the, the website, there is a survey there, there's the, the, all the documents are there that people can look at. If people are struggling with them, we can, we can post out paper copies, but obviously we'd rather know if people can engage online, that's the most effective for us. We're, we're wanting to make sure that we do reach everyone and, and so we're going to put up some posters etcetera to, to make people aware. Those people who haven't come across it through the social media and the other channels that we've been trying to inform people. And people have got till Sunday the 11th to, to feedback on that. So hopefully that gives them that opportunity. The other thing that we have been doing and, and members may have seen some of these is we've been doing a series of webinars now, they're now all available on the website, on YouTube, you can look back at them, there's one on each of the six big moves. We've had, for instance, last night had people from councillor Kim Groves as Chair of the Combined Authority. It had people from the Combined Authority in terms of the Bus Services Director and also First Bus Representatives as well to give us that, that, that view of how we can work together to get improvements on that. And there's others on the other big moves in there as well. There's a final one which councillor Hayden will be, will be at on Thursday next week about next steps. How do we take this forward? What have you told us so far and how can we continue to deliver? So I think that's, that's it for me Chair, thank you for giving us the time. I think when, when, when members are addressing questions, I'd quite like to understand how much you agree with what, what I've set out and the visions as your sort of opening statements. What have we missed out in the strategy? Is there anything we've missed? And as we go forward, what are the key priorities for your area in terms of transport? They'd be useful to understand those. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Paul, thank you. Has, has anyone's got any questions or any comments please?
Yes Chair, I think, I think it's important that, that we, we also include disabled access and making sure that, that whatever changes are made ensure that, that disabled people are able to access all the, all the places that they need to. And I think as well as that, like, there's, there's, there are issues around cars and health. But we, we should also be mindful that, that disabled people are quite often more reliant on cars than able-bodied people. That's all I wanted to raise there.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a good point here.
Yeah, thanks councillor Brooks. I think, I think if you, when you, we really do hope that if you read the full, full strategy, we have included that, it is at the heart of what, what we do, making sure, you know, that, that, that schemes are, do work for everyone, that the strategy is working for everyone. Just to sort of a little bit of insight, if you like, we do work quite closely with the Access and Usability Group on scheme design. So for instance, when we were doing the hedgerow scheme in the city centre, we had our contractors build a mock piece of street with all the different materials, how the curb heights were, what the materials and colours were to ensure that we were doing it right. So the people with, who were partially sighted, for the blind, make sure that they could, they, you know, they could easily navigate with the curbs etcetera. They could get a wheelchair up them. So we had people testing what we're going to deliver on the scheme. So as part of everything we develop and deliver, we do do that consultation to ensure we do get it right. But I think the, the point around the essential use of car again, that, that's in there in terms of the strategy. What we need to do is encourage more people who can to change and that make, that then allows those who are essential users, you know, hopefully we can move, help them and give incentives for they can utilise electric vehicles and therefore reduce the, the pollution effects of that. But there's still that opportunity for them and we're working on charging infrastructure etcetera to make that a possibility. And obviously there is, there's still going to be essential vehicles on the road, there's deliveries, there's people who do those community visits etcetera. We want, we want to have those options for them. But what we're talking about here is making sure that there are alternatives for those who can use them and we have a, an efficient system for, for the whole city and, and we don't leave anyone out because there is, well, there are in the city 30% of households don't have access to a car. And I'm sure in some of your wards, that is even, even, you know, an even higher figure. And so we want to make sure that the transport system works for the people who can't, can't or don't have access to cars as well. So I think there's a you know, there is an acknowledgement of that in the strategy and I hope that comes across in, in what we do.
Good, thank you Paul.
Now, I'm having an issue with the, with the screen, so I can't see everyone's. So if anybody wants to speak, just, just say your name and, and ask question please. That is, I think no one has any question for you Paul. Well presented the report and I think members are quite satisfied by the, by the sound of it. But thank you and you enjoy your rest of your evening. More than happy if you want to stay, but no doubt.
It's been a long day of Zoom calls Chair, thank you. Don't mind, yeah.
Thank you. Right, can we now swiftly move on to item nine, which is a finance report and it's Mercia to present please.
Yes, thank you Chair. I just, I'm going to start with paragraph 17 of a financial report. For everybody, I know you've probably all seen it. Because there's an update here. So this is actually telling you the remaining balance in terms of the wellbeing fund. And because we've had some money returned to the pot since these papers were actually drafted, the remaining money in there should actually be 16,753 pounds. So it's a bit more than, than what we thought. And I just wanted to draw your attention now to that Chair, to table one, showing all the wellbeing projects, but in particular. But in particular to the, the projects that we put aside, the budgets that we put aside. So the communications budget, which we've only used a very tiny amount because obviously because of COVID, we've not been able to report any events on and all that sort of thing. And also the YAF summit money. So I, what I would say and propose to you is that both of those amounts are actually returned to the main pot, then they can be used for something else.
I personally don't have any issue, but I will invite the members if they have any, any comments.
I'm happy with that, Chair.
Thank you, anyone else?
I'm also happy with that, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Brooke, councillor Prior, anybody else?
Yeah, fine with that, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Howley, anyone else?
Fine with that.
Councillor Knight, yeah, thank you. Seems like everyone's in agreement then, thank you.
Yeah, fine with that, too.
Thank you.
So we'll amend all, we'll amend our last spreadsheets and return all those monies to the pot. And then I can actually set you out a revised table so that you know what money is we've actually got left as an update. Okay. So we'll now move on to the COVID funding pots. We have two of these, so the original, the wellbeing original COVID pot. In terms of the overall expenditure for the Inner North West, that now stands at £13,709.5. So there's just a balance there of about £3,290 remaining for use across the Inner North West area. Then there is the second pot, which is the government tier three funding, which needs to be actually spent by the end of March or committed by the end of March, I should say. And the amount spent out of that is £27,361. So we've not really got a lot left in that anyway. So it's just a reminder really that any money's left, obviously we need to have a discussion in the next week or so about it so that all that money is spent by the end of the month.
Definitely, I think we've got to, we've got to agree before the 25th of March anyway. Yeah, so let's, let's, let's have another quick either through the emails or we can have a members' meeting for half an hour or so.
Okay, Chair, yes. And then we'll move on to the applications for funding. Now, I'm not going to go into this in any detail because I've emailed all the members and said because the budget for the next financial year has not yet been agreed, what anybody decided was that these decisions would actually be made at a separate funding meeting. So I'm just going to say what applications we actually have, which is first of all wilderness on your doorstep application for outdoor activities, a commissioned project for, with partnership for older residents based in Hyde Park Woodslay area, Moneybodies, which is delivering the service right across the Inner North West in all wards. So those projects have already come in and will be decided on. So we'll now move on to the YAF budget. Okay, with everybody?
Yeah.
And again, on your papers, it will say that the amount that we have left over is £1,422. This has actually been updated today with money that's come back in from two projects that were not able to go ahead because of COVID restrictions. So we now actually have £3,300 from last year. And we also have two applications that have come in for the YAF budget, which is the welcoming youth group, which is in Wheatwood Ward and the Easter Extravaganza Art Camp, which takes place in Heading End Hyde Park Ward in the Easter holidays. So it's just really to make a note of those. And also the Leeds City Academy Youth Worker Support. So all of these projects have come in looking for funding and will be agreed at a funding meeting once we have the finalized budget for the committee, that is what we've been agreeing. Okay. So the only other things to really update on, I do apologise, Steve doesn't realise that I'm in a meeting, is the capital budget update, the figure there remaining balance, I think it's the same as last time. It's £15,298 there. And the SIL budget, infrastructure budget, we have £40,778. And I will advise members that I have been advised that there are actually two injections into that budget that have not yet gone on to the spreadsheets. So when we have the funding meeting, I will update on what that is so that you know what money you've actually got. So it probably will be quite a lot more than that amount that hasn't been done yet. Okay.
Yeah, obviously, because, sorry, who was this?
Who was what, sorry?
Sorry, I thought someone wanted to speak.
No, I don't know.
No worries. Yeah, obviously because of the COVID, not many projects has taken place with regards to the capital funding. So hopefully once all the restrictions are lifted, there will be many, many communities will be starting different projects. So does anyone want to come in or any questions with regards to Master's report or any comments? Thank you.
Okay. Chair, do you want me to move on to the update report?
Please, please.
Okay. Really, for the update report, I just wanted to highlight three sections, that's all. Some of the other updates being provided by services are quite extensive. So I didn't really think it would appropriate to read all those out. The two things, because we don't actually have councillor Garth Wait, I will, I will read that part out. So firstly, the children and families group is planning to meet as soon as we have the results of the online survey, which has been sent to all schools and youth organisations where young people could be able to comment, make suggestions and vote on what they would like to see happening in their area for young people. Because we weren't able to do the Inner North West actual youth summit, we have sent that survey out to the schools. And I know, for example, that Rosebank School are doing it with year five and six. So once we have that result, we'll be able to have a children and families meeting and then look at what's come out of that and plan for, for the next time for young people. The environment section, we've had a subgroup meeting which has been focused on graffiti and this took place on the 23rd of February. And a number of people came from the community and the university as well as officers and councillors. And some of the work that had been going on in the Kirkstall Ward was discussed in terms of removal of graffiti and so on. And I think what we decided at that meeting was that there would be a letter going out to residents in certain targeted areas, the Harolds area, which is very badly affected by tagging and graffiti. And this would then be followed up by a local meeting and hopefully some local action around removal of graffiti and then considering what else to do with local residents involved with the aim of actually setting up a new environmentally focused group made up of local residents. So that is what we're doing and the next meeting for that group will be the 15th of April, Chair.
Okay, thank you.
And moving on towards the end of the report, I just wanted to bring to your attention that the mental health, mental health workshops that were actually funded by the committee, I just want to make you aware that the first one took place on the 1st of February and this was attended by 10 community representatives. And I did receive a lot of very good feedback from people who are very appreciative of it and said it was really useful and they would like us to do more. And it was agreed that we would fund another one on the 12th of April. So we're currently filling those places with community representatives at the moment. So I think that may be a piece of work we need to come back to and maybe consider for further funding.
Definitely.
Any questions or anything about any of the other sections that I've not actually read out in the update report?
Members, have you, have you have any questions or any comments? Well done. Okay, everyone is satisfied then. Is there anything else you want to say, Master, is that it?
Yes, that's fine, yeah.
Excellent, excellent. Is there any other business?
Chair, we've just have the final report on the agenda for the dates, times and venues of meetings for next year.
I was going to go into the other business and then go into the dates, times, yeah, sorry. Any other business? Yep. Okay, in that case, item 11, dates, times and the venues for 2022, Andy?
Okay, thank you, Chair. Members are asked to consider agreeing the proposed meeting schedule for the 2021-22 municipal year. If we go to paragraph eight on the report, which is page 64 of your agenda pack, it outlines the proposed dates, which are Thursday, the 1st of July, 23rd of September and 2nd of December. And then going into next year, the 10th of March. Those dates are based loosely on the meeting dates we've had over the previous year. And it's proposed that the committee continues to meet on a Thursday at 6pm. So members are asked to agree to that so that we can get that put in the council calendar.
Are we all okay with this?
Can I make a suggestion that we maybe look at changing it to a different day? Simply because city plan seems to be on the same day or it seems to fall on the same day.
Yeah, I think with today especially, it's been an additional meeting which has caused, caused a problem there, councillor Brooks. But again, if you, if you're wanting to move it to a different day today, now's the time to do it if you want to look at that.
I don't have any other suggestions, four days. I just, I just thought.
Mon, Monday is going to be difficult for us as, as a Labour councillors because we normally have Labour group meetings on Monday. But Wednesdays, sometimes the council falls on, but surely we can work around and then other engagement. But Thursday was quite good actually, but obviously I understand what councillor Brooks is saying. How about Tuesdays? Is everyone happy with the Tuesdays? Tuesday evenings?
Oh, yeah, I am, yeah.
Any objections? No, happy with that.
Yeah, Tuesday evening's not good for me.
All right, okay.
I coach on Tuesdays.
Wednesday's going to be difficult, Thursday and Friday is definitely, it's going to be.
Chair, is there an issue with going with Wednesdays when we don't have full council?
Full council meetings. Will, will that cause any problems, Andy?
Well, when, when we do the calendar, we obviously look at all of the meetings that are going on, full council, et cetera, group meetings, religious festivals, holidays, et cetera. I'm sure that we can schedule in on a Wednesday if you're happy for me to go away and come back with another set of proposed dates.
Yeah, yeah, we need, we need to check, avoid second Wednesday of the month, though, whatever you do, please.
Okay. So if you, if you're happy for me to do that, and then I'll run those dates through members as soon as we've got them ready and prepared for you. Okay, and regarding venues, obviously at this moment in time, it's difficult to say where we'll meet next. But obviously we've done it on an ad hoc basis in the past and it suggests that we stick to doing that.
Sure, absolutely. I mean, we need to rotate in different wards, yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll move to Wednesdays, still at 6pm and I'll come up with some dates for you for those.
Thank you. Right, in that case, thank you very much.